Three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, Special Board of Education Meeting for Kent County Public Schools. Welcome everyone for joining us tonight. We are opening this meeting at this moment. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. This is an action item. The administration is recommending approval of the agenda this evening, as small as it may be. I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ms. Sullivan has the motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. McGee has the second. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. I'm sorry.
Aye.
Ms. Messick?
(laughing).
I'm missing the little, she did say aye. I'm missing the little asterisk, so thank you. Sorry.
That's okay.
Ms. Messick, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. The first item on the, in the board discussion agenda, after our last board meeting, I had received some mail, and it was, I think, the day after, maybe two days after. There was recognition that came to us, excuse me, the Board of Education. January of 2024 is the Maryland School Board Recognition Month. So we received two citations, one citation proclamation and one certificate, and I'd like to read both. The first one is from Governor Wes Moore, the State of Maryland proclamation, Maryland School Board Recognition Month, January 2024. Whereas the Maryland Association of Boards of Education is a private, nonprofit, organized, dedicated to, organization dedicated to serving and supporting boards of education in Maryland, and whereas Maryland students greatly benefit from the state school boards providing access to essential academic, social, emotional, and economic supports, and whereas our state is grateful to all of Maryland's school boards that work to ensure rigorous and world-class educational experience for every Maryland student. Now therefore, I, Wes Moore, Governor of the State of Maryland, do hereby proclaim January 2024 as Maryland School Board Recognition Month in Maryland, and call upon the people of our state to join in this observance. So we have a nice proclamation here from the Governor of Maryland. Definitely appreciate that, and certainly they appreciate us and our colleagues across the state who work very hard at doing their jobs. The next is a certificate, Maryland School Board Recognition Month Certificate, proudly presented to Kent County Board of Education for dedicated leadership in Kent County and committed service to the schools and students of Kent County Public Schools. Your hard work, dedication, and achievement are applauded. Signed Clarence Crawford, President, Maryland State Board of Education, and Milton Nagel, Executive Director, Maryland Association of Boards of Education. We have a nice certificate as well. So thank you all for the work that you do. Thank you for these certificates. We really appreciate it, and it's always nice to get a little recognition. So thanks again. Okay, we're going to move into the superintendent's search discussion. Really, from a structural standpoint, you know, obviously, we had a pretty big announcement at the last board meeting, which was about two weeks ago, and I think we were just kind of getting through the night. So I wanted to come back, and I appreciate those that could make it. Mr. Orsby unfortunately could not make it tonight. Just to kind of level set and get a tone of where each of the board members are. We definitely have a superintendent's search ahead of us. You know, and certainly wanted to connect with, with each of you and have this conversation tonight. The goal is, once we kind of go through this space, then we're very fortunate to have Mabe here this evening to walk us through what this search process would look like through Mabe, the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. And then listed after that is the opportunity for potential action item, you know, if we wanted to move forward with the search process, and then we could talk about timing, et cetera. So I'll open the, the conversation to fellow board members. You can start and kind of give us your thoughts. We've had two weeks to think about it.
For me, this would be my first time going through the process. I think it is for, for most of us on the board. So I'm actually really looking forward to the Mabe presentation to see what the steps are, because I think that, that, I think we are ready to start this journey sooner rather than later. I think it was, it was a surprise for us, even though it was expected soonish. But at this point, I, I feel like I want to dig in. So that's, that's kind of where my head is.
What do you mean by dig in? Conversation, yeah, well, I think we all do. Don't we? (laughing) I don't know, I don't know what you're looking for me to say.
How are you feeling right now?
I feel good. Isn't that the answer everybody's supposed to say? Echoing a little bit of what Ms. Sullivan said, you know, I was surprised, but I wasn't surprised. I'm eager to start rolling up our sleeves. I mean, I, I want to make a decision tonight about what direction we're going to take so that we can start working. I mean, I don't want to put it off until the February meeting, because Dr. Couch is going to be gone in four months. You know, no matter where we are in our process, the one thing we do know is that she will be gone. So I, I don't know if you're looking for, anybody's thoughts on whether it's an interim or any of those kinds of things at this stage.
Wherever you'd like to go with the conversation.
I, well, I'll, I'll be very forthcoming in saying, I don't want an interim superintendent. I want to make a decision. I want to have a new person in place by July 1st. I think, you know, hey, I'm, I'm loyal all the way to Kent County, but I think we're going to be a tough sell. We're the smallest county in the state. We've got the fewest students. We've got the fewest schools. We're the fifth poorest county in the state. We haven't gotten a lot of support from our chief funding arm of government. If, you know, Maryland is in a difficult position, because we're getting ready to have to tackle blueprint here in Kent County. You know, we've already had our commissioners say that they can't fund a middle school and blueprint. We're looking at a, at a new middle school as well, and I don't want to, I don't want to burden an interim with those kinds of very important decisions, nor do I want that to, an interim to end up delaying as we try to move forward. And I know some people have said, well, you know, you don't have enough time, you know, we have to have a new superintendent by June, but that's the way it normally is. I mean, state law, I mean, am I right that Dr. Couch could have waited until next month to tell us? So, you know, so if she had done this next, next year, we'd be in the same darn boat that we are right now. So, and the last time, so the, the process that brought Dr. Couch here, you know, 11 years ago, was exactly the same, the same timeframe that we're getting ready to go through now. So I don't see that as an obstacle. That's just the way it is. So those are some of my thoughts.
Okay. Great. Mr. Rhodes?
I have a few thoughts. You were speaking about an interim. I don't know if that's going to happen or not, if we find a person. I, I agree, that would be great if we could, we might find the right person fast, who knows? But I, I want to read a few things here. It shouldn't take too long. I wrote this today. When hiring a new superintendent, we need to do our due diligence, meaning every candidate needs to be vetted with careful and critical examination. Our current Maryland State Superintendent is an interim as the state looks for a permanent one. I don't know how that's working, but the state is doing that. This occurred in October of 2023, and I do feel we might want an interim also, should the process be difficult. In my opinion, we do not want to rush this process. We might find the perfect candidate real soon. In the event a successor is not chosen within the timeframe, we might indeed find a suitable candidate. If the interim or temporary superintendent is the route we take, I do think they should not be a candidate or have a decision in the final choice. That's my opinion. My preference is a Kent County local, first, if they meet the criteria. Second, from the Eastern Shore or the state of Maryland. We have many political situations in our state and need a person who is knowledgeable on how our laws work. I want a team builder. Dr. Couch knows how Maryland works, so I'm not saying anything against that, but I would, that's what I would prefer. We will need to check out the claims of each candidate. A personal endorsement or support for a candidate needs to be checked out, find out where they work or what they have accomplished, and check additional sources, just not on their resume. Our search committee should involve representatives and members from our community. The candidates or candidate should have a question and answer session with our community before voting. We need to peel back the layers of their past performances. I would prefer a candidate who will build consensus in our community. We need a people person. In my, in my campaign, my platform included being a ground person. Meet the custodians, the bus drivers, the coaches, teachers, and administrators. Let's work together. This is a big and important decision that might impact our school system for years. Again, our whole community needs to be involved. We work for them. Trust, communication, transparency, and of course, knowledge are all hallmarks of our school, that our school system deserves. Again, in my opinion, and I have said this many times before, we live in a great county with citizens who want our school system to grow and thrive. We only have five schools and need to make all of them succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Ms. Messick, do you have any input, insight?
I'm really excited to be a part of this process, I think, especially since this is the first time in 11 years that a student member has been. I don't even know if we had a student member.
We did.
We did? Okay. So I think it's really cool. It's a very unique experience that I'm really excited to be a part of. I just, and I won't be here for the whole thing, but I think it's really, oh, I will.
Yes, you will.
Because it ends soon. So I will. That's really cool. But I think that just, I think, I, I trust that whatever process that we choose to search to find the best candidate will provide the best outcome for the, for the county. I have a lot of faith in the board and its decisions, and I think that, I think hopefully that we will find a really great candidate and a great person to take Dr. Couch's place and to progress our community, so.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Messick. Appreciate it. So just a few comments for me. You know, this is going to be a very busy time of year. We have the budget process starting at the same time, and it's going to mean that, you know, this board and, and those folks, we go through the process, and we'll hear more tonight about what, what a potential process will look like. I mean, it, it will be inclusive. Definitely, we will, we will look at the process and honor it in confidentiality, respecting candidates, respecting the process, respecting what is the right thing to do for those that are interested to come here. But I think it is very important, and I echo that, you know, and I know how, it's not a, it's not a process that I take lightly. You know, I've been involved with some searches in the education world, as well as outside in the private sector. It's a great time to kind of look within at us and look at the system, and also look outward, you know, to see what that next possibility could look like. And this is a great process to do that, you know? So I know that there's a, there is some concern and some, there has been some folks that are a little rocky, and what does the next chapter look like in the book, you know? But, but we, we will be okay. And I know I mentioned that last time, you know, and, and we're, we're all here as just different notches or holes in a, in a belt, and, and it will continue. We'll do the great, the best job we can. We'll be nimble, flexible. We'll put our heads down, and we'll, we'll rock it out. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to the process. I mean, certainly, you know, I was not expecting to be a, you know, to have it so soon, to have the superintendent's search happen now, but it is. It's here, so we'll do the best work we can, you know, and, and we'll take everyone's input. So I'm pretty excited about the process, to be honest with you, so. Okay. Any additional comments? All right. So I think then what we'll do is...
Well, maybe I will ask you, because I'm looking at our agenda. Is this considered an action item tonight?
It, it is listed as an action in case.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, in case, yeah.
It is listed, as Dr. Couch mentioned, as in case. You know, certainly, Mabe's been fortunate to be here. I'm not going to take away the comments or take away the show, but, but Mabe has a proven track record of doing this very well in this space, and works daily with all of our 24 counties across the state, one city and 23 counties. But I think, you know, it was wise for us to have representation here to kind of give us an idea as to what that looks like.
Yeah. Well, so this is the first search that all of us will have participated in, although I'm very familiar with the search, the search that brought Dr. Couch here, because I was part of the, the interview process, so, and I have a lot of faith in Mabe, so.
Okay. Any additional comments before we allow Mabe to come up? Okay, so with that being said, we'll go ahead and invite our friends from Mabe up. I see Mr. Milton Nagel is heading to the podium, so welcome, Mr. Nagel.
Good evening, President Getz, Superintendent Couch, and members of the board, Milton Nagel. Executive Director at Mabe in my seventh month, more or less, in this role. Two years prior to that, serving as the Deputy Executive Director at Mabe, primarily responsible for oversight of the insurance programs. Kent County Public Schools, as, as everyone here knows, small school district in Maryland, relies heavily on almost every service that Mabe provides and product, and that's a good thing. So there's a lot that Mabe does well on, to benefit school districts across the state, but especially the smaller school districts that otherwise would not have the, don't have the economies and scales, that collaborative purchasing, the pooling, which is what the insurance programs do, allows, you know, school districts to combine their assets to buy down pricing on, on various products. It, it helps to squeeze that dollar and makes, and, and put as many pennies as possible in the classroom where they belong, for the betterment of our kids, but at the same time, ensuring that we have very good controls and high fidelity and, and quality products. You also participate in the Esmac Health Insurance Alliance here on the shore, one of six school districts. That collaborative, that's another collaborative purchasing where, when that, when that entity was created 29 years ago, before that, every one of the school districts was in a fully insured product, which meant very similar to your own personal homeowner's insurance or your vehicle insurance. Every year you get a renewal in the mail, and you just are stuck with the renewal, or you go out and find another company to, you shop it around. Coming together with the other five school districts and one county government enabled us to go to a more self-insurance model, and that's, that's been to the betterment, betterment of Kent County and all the other school districts, and it's saved literally millions of dollars over the years, and helped to control cost increases year over year, because as we are now the single largest self-insured insurance program on, on Delmarva, we have a large voice, and so we can negotiate better rates for the, for the few lines that we do insure with, directly with the carrier, which was something we could never do individually on our own. And I know that, because I live that, because I'm a Caroline County resident and been intimately involved with many of the insurance programs for a long time. Onto why we're here tonight. One of the, one of the services that you get when you pay your dues to Mabe for your Mabe membership is tonight. This, this is not a charged event. I'm here on, on Mabe's dime. I'm here on my own free will, because of my compassion for wanting to see, make sure that you have the best information possible going forward to make one of the most important decisions you will make as board members, and that's selection of a superintendent. It's a process that you cannot take lightly. It's a process that's going to involve a tremendous amount of your time and commitment and confidentiality, and so I can't stress that enough. With me tonight are two long-term superintendents from the Eastern Shore, Mr. Bill Middleton, who's going to do a majority of the, of the talking, longtime superintendent from Wycomico County, and Mr. Terry Greenwood, long-term superintendent from Oyster County. Should you decide, let me preface this by saying, this presentation is meant to be an informational presentation. It's not a Mabe sales pitch. It's meant to outline to you in detail the process, the steps, so that you have a firm understanding of what your commitment's going to be. Then, at the end of the night, if you so choose to move forward with Mabe, or if you have questions following the presentation about why Mabe, why should we select Mabe, and what, what does Mabe bring to the table, we can talk about that, but that's not the true intent of our purpose here tonight. This is not a sales pitch, because if, this is a service that you're procuring, over and above what you pay for your dues. But we have some pretty compelling reasons why we think, for, especially for a school system like Kent, selecting Mabe would, would, makes a lot of sense. But at the end of the day, there are firms out there that, that provide this service nationally and, and some more reasonably. So like, like I said, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Bill, who's going to walk you through the PowerPoint presentation, which you have in front of you, and, and then we'll be available to answer any questions you have on the back end. And thank you again for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Milt. I have to say, someone says that as you get older, the time flies fast. Well, it doesn't seem like it's been 11 years since I was here and found somebody in New Mexico to be your superintendent, but here we are again. Thank you for this opportunity. As Milt said, this presentation does not necessarily follow exactly the Mabe search. That's not what we're here for. Some places, yeah, it's what Mabe does, but also, in almost this entire presentation, follows something that I pulled up on the internet, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago. And I, I pulled up, how do boards find new superintendents? And how do they do searches? Well, I found a full document done by a lady in Iowa, and lo and behold, it almost exactly shows what you're going to see tonight. And that was a national search. So whether you do Mabe or you do a private organization, it's going to be basically the same thing. There are shortcuts that you can take to speed the process up, but be careful what the shortcuts, shortcuts are. Okay. And please, as I go through this, if you have a question, throw your hand up. I would much rather answer the question while it's hot and let it cool off for 20 minutes and then forget the question, okay? What's the purpose of doing a superintendent's search to start with? Well, the bottom line is, you've got to find a new leader, but planning and execute a search process that's thoughtful, responsive, and fair. And that fair comes in, especially if you have local candidates. If you have someone that's on the board of it, on the staff now, that applies for the job, they get the same treatment and the same confidentiality as someone that comes from New Mexico or Pennsylvania or wherever. And that puts a new burden on you as board members, to be fair to the local person. And just a sideline, if you are, when a search starts, if you and the local candidate are in the hallway discussing business, it's going to come out that you're talking about their qualifications as a superintendent, and that puts you in a bad light. So if you just decide during the search, if you have a local candidate, at least two board members ought to be there talking with the candidate. It's just a matter of protecting what it looks like. Okay, that, that's free. Minimize the possibility of legal challenges or results procedural flaws. One of the main reasons you hire a consultant is to keep you out of court and keep you from getting sued for something that you did wrong. That's one of the main reasons. Now, any consultant will work closely with your board attorney to be sure that that works out fine, but they need to know the Maryland law and the, any kind of personnel law. Identify the best leader for your school system. Bottom line. Bottom line. The best person to lead your school system now, not last year or 10 years ago when things were as they were, but today, as things are today. And it's two different worlds, folks, from that time and now, okay? The best leader for your school system at this time. There are basically four steps to any search. Whoever does the search, planning the search, and we'll go through the steps in that, advertising and recruiting, just a comment, the minute you start advertising today, you are doing a international search, because the minute it hits the computers, it's, it's international. So if, if you thought, a few years ago, a board said, we want somebody that is out of the state of Maryland, has done, that's it, period. You can't do that anymore, because if you're going to put it on your website, that you're looking for a superintendent, and here's the application, you're doing an international search. It's just that simple. Screening and selecting a candidate, the steps that go through with that, it's an interview and what have you, and appointing a new superintendent. Maryland has very strict laws of how you appoint a new superintendent. Questions to discuss with any consultant. Number of successful searches conducted in Maryland experience. This Mabe team has done about 35 searches in the state of Maryland, okay? Consultants' background and experience. Right now, we have four consultants, possibly five. Three of those potential consultants are retired superintendents in Maryland. Same size district experience, or we've done a lot of them, all of them, I guess, larger than yours, but not by much. And I think we did, we've done two searches here, I believe, already. Current searches, we are talking with two other school systems. One, I think, is going to probably go with a private group. The other one probably will go with Mabe, and so that would be, we would do two. We have a staff, and we have done as many as four searches in a year.
Are you, are you limited by how many you could have going simultaneously as a searches?
Well, we're only limited by how much time the retired superintendents want to work. Not really. It doesn't look as though Garrett County is, is open, and this county, and Somerset, and Howard.
Is it Howard? Yeah.
Okay. We probably, just from where we, information we have at this time, may be doing possibly two, and that should not be a problem.
I was just wondering how you...
Pardon?
I was wondering how you would avoid a, I don't want to say conflict, makes it sound in a bad way, but, so Garrett, Somerset, and Kent are all among the three smallest school districts in the state, and we, we share some characteristics, you know, poverty and stuff like that. How do you make sure that each of the school districts that you are conducting the search with gets your best, so that there's, conflict isn't the right word, but, you know, the, the same person could fit maybe both school districts? same person could fit maybe both school districts? How do you, how do you navigate that?
Quite frankly, the candidate pool for those three counties will be different.
Okay.
Garrett County has to love snow. Somerset County has to love crabs, and so forth. No, we typically do not have a problem, even though, even with the four searches that we did in one year, it was not an issue. People do their homework. They graduated from high school in that county, and now they're ready to come back home, and so they don't want to go to the other places. So it has not been an issue, but our job is to see that if they do apply in two places, they get a straight shot in both places.
Okay.
Okay?
No, I wasn't worrying that they wouldn't. I just was acknowledging that it could be tricky.
It's something you need to pay attention to.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, very much. Okay. Expenses, base fee, what you'll get from any consulting group is a base fee. Additional expenses like travel, and if MAB or the group has to do some extra work like running a, running a search or running a input, then you may get a additional fee, but that would be discussed ahead of time before you do it. And the billing procedure, yeah, you need to know when you're going to get billed. Most consulting groups will take about 50% of the fee upfront, and then the rest can be paid over a monthly basis or however you work it out. Procedure, search process and timeline, that you'll have an idea of, hopefully, when I finish. Responsibilities, consultant versus board and our staff duties. Your staff will be asked to do some things as a search. Your staff has a knowledge of what the good things are about your county, about the parents in the county, how to get information to them. If you do a survey, how the survey goes out. MAB doesn't have that information, so, and no consultant has that information, so they will be asked to do that. When it comes time to schedule meetings, then someone on the staff probably will be in touch with me to say, this is when we can work this out, and so forth. And there's very little way of getting around that. You just have to keep in touch with the people. Contract, sign with advice of board attorney. Please don't sign a contract with anybody, especially a consulting group, until your attorney says yes, do that, okay? Not that we're a bad bunch, but.
[laughing]
Okay, planning a search. That's the first of those four steps, four stages. Choose a consultant, and that's something that you need to spend a little time about and feel comfortable with. Establish overall timeline. You are in a pretty good shape right now as far as getting a search done by the first of June. We believe that the deadline should be May 30th, or 31st, whichever it is. That gives the new superintendent time to work with the existing superintendent. We have had searches, quite frankly, that the decision was made and announced on June the 30th, and that created a number of issues. So our goal with any search is that it be completed by May 30. And it gives you enough time to do that. There is an issue that he's already mentioned, it's budget time. Having lived through budget time, I understand the timeframe that it takes, but it can be worked out to get the job done between now and then. Establish confidentiality protocols. This is handled different ways by different consultants. MAB asks each board member to sign a confidentiality protocol. It just says, how do I say this? I'll keep my mouth shut. What I know, I don't tell anybody, okay? If I'm asked a question, I refer it to the spokesman, and we recommend that you have one board spokesman, which is the next thing. That typically is the board president, but it does not have to be. It's up to whoever the board wants to put out the information. And that, any questions, or refer to the board spokesman. Develop a plan for stakeholder input. Folks, today, you must have a plan for stakeholder input. Parents, students, business community, politicians. It used to be that we met in a school, we invited people to come in and got their input and so forth. When I started, we were having 50, 60 people show up for those meetings. When we stopped doing that, we were having five, eight, 10 people show up. It's a different world. So we have been using a survey out to all the parents and whoever else the board wants to send it to. We have gotten as many as 700 responses to the survey. There's no way you would ever get 700 people out to a meeting to go over it. So it has, it has expanded the accessibility of stakeholders to the search process. Establish candidate criteria. The big criteria is Maryland certification as a superintendent, and I will go through those in a few minutes. Identify desirable characteristics in the superintendent. What do you want the person to know, to have done, to be willing to do? The characteristics of a superintendent, and some of those were mentioned tonight. And that's, you list those, you put the criteria down and the characteristics, and the search revolves around those things. You say what you want, and then the search revolves around those characteristics and those criteria. Your interview questions come from those topics. Your discussions come from those topics. If you have new ideas, that's fine, but the basic search comes from those criteria and And that's where you get, can get a lot of stakeholder input. Develop materials, and here, this is where I said, the school district staff. Advertising internationally now is a lot cheaper than it was 10, 12 years ago. It used to be, it would cost $5,000 for Education Week and a few other publications. Today, there's a couple places where we can do it through the internet, and it'll cost $2,000, and it goes wow, out there. We can, any consultant can give you what it costs from those places. Brochure, a flyer, you need something to put on your website and have published with the ad for the position that tells the good things about your community and your school system. And it used to be that if you printed 2,000 of them, and you mailed them out, and you handed them out, today, you might print a dozen of them, put one in each school or something like that. The rest of it is done through the website. Make a brochure, flyer available to interested applicants on their websites. Advertise through local press releases. I think if you did a ad here in the sun papers, you'd have to redo your budget. It's unreal what that would cost. So we recommend, and I think most would, to do it through press releases. You make a press release, say, what's going on? And radio stations will pick it up, TV stations will pick it up, and some weekly newspapers will pick it up, and it's free. National search media, we would, any consultant can put you in touch with national search groups, and that's where the advertising goes. Social media, as much as I dislike saying this to you, you need to use social media to tell about your superintendent's search, okay? Just be sure to keep it clean. Local school district and MAB websites, most consultants, I know that we send, have a list of all the local school systems in Maryland and Delaware, and some in Pennsylvania, and we send the brochure and the ad and so forth to those, and they publicize it in their school system. Professional associations, AASA, American Association of School Administrators, a number of those type of elementary principals, secondary principals, they all will advertise for you on their newsletters. And it's free. Whatever flyer you do or website showcases your district, you've got some good things going here. Be sure that they, that you talk about them. Community demographics. Yeah, there's a lot of reasons why people want to come to Kent County. I can give you a dozen, but I'm in Wycomico, so I have to be careful. Provide an overview of the district and its outstanding features. You're a small school system, and it gives you some real things you can talk about. List the criteria and characteristic to be used in the selection process. That's simply the ones that you picked earlier, and they get out. Describe the selection process, just kind of, this is what we're going to do, one interview, two interviews, so forth and so on. And outline the timeline, and that would be typically that we intend to have the process completed by May 30th. And I will tell you before I go any further, there will be times when you and the public, stakeholders, will say, what the heck's going on? Why aren't we hearing something? Well, it's probably the month that the applications have to be out on the street, and, you know, the applications go to the consultant, so you don't know what's going on. It becomes a patience builder at that point. Okay. Certification of the state of Maryland, an absolute. I haven't talked with a state superintendent the whole time I've been here that has said, okay, we'll waive certification, no problem. Now, they had done that on interim once, but the person had to make up their deficit before September 1st. So this, this is, there's two routes to certification in Maryland. The first is traditional certification. That means, go to college, through a program for certification, and you get your degree, and your certification basically comes with that degree. The details of that, Maryland-approved program, there's one that, University of Maryland, College Park, that's the only one right now that's been approved in the state of Maryland. And experience requirements, that trips some people up. 27 months of satisfactory teaching performance or satisfactory performance as a certified specialist, speech therapist, and so forth. Some people have said, a person can be a superintendent without having teaching experience. That's a debatable question, but in Maryland, it is not because the bylaw, COMAR, says they have to have 27 months of successful teaching experience. And 24 months of satisfactory administrative or supervisory experience. They don't have to have been a superintendent, but they have to be in some kind of supervisory or administrative role for 24 months. And that gives you an idea that there is some screening done. And your consultants, in some cases, one of two things. They'll say, that's a responsibility of the applicant to see all that. In other cases, the consulting firm will do some homework and work with the candidate to be sure they meet these certifications. Any question on certification? The other route to certification is reciprocal certification. When I started this role, if you were not certified in Maryland, but you were in Pennsylvania, you still had to meet the Maryland certification requirements. A few years ago, probably been eight, 10 now, that was changed. If you are a superintendent or have been a superintendent in another state, you present verification of at least 36 months of satisfactory performance as a superintendent during the past seven years, okay? So you have to have been a superintendent and 36 months during the past seven years, fully certified in that state, and then presents verification of two years of graduate work in addition to that, which typically, it won't be a problem. But that has opened the door to so many other candidates from out of state. It has really increased the pool of qualified candidates for the state of Maryland. Screening step. Step number three in the process, review and rank applications based on established criteria and characteristics. Notice, when you get applications, you sit down with the application and your list of what you want, and that's how you rank them, okay? MAB believes that the board should see every application, okay? We will do some screening and give you comments on the applications. Some search teams say, we will do the screening and we will bring you five applicants, okay? That's up to the board. If that's what you want MAB to do, then we'll talk with you. But we believe that in fairness to the applicants, that you at least need to see the applications. After you do the ranking, you identify candidates for first round interview. You agree on the interview questions. Most consultants will give you sample interview questions that you can pick from, add to, but at least gives you a starting point. Typically, the first interview is a structured interview. You ask the same questions of every candidate. There's no follow-up. You don't give them a second bite of the bullet, and the way they answer the question is the way they answer the question. And that, you conduct the first round interviews. It's up to you how many first round interviews you want to do. Based on the first round interviews, identify candidates for second. The recommendation is that it be open-ended, which means the board can follow up with questions that they wanted to follow up on from the first interview, or they can have a whole new set of questions. And there can be follow-up. So it's a different scenario, but you've got a different group of candidates that you've already talked with once. So it's open-ended. Perform deeper reference and background checks, maintaining candidate confidentiality. Comment was made, we want to know all we can find out about. To this point, nobody except the board, really, and MAB, two people at MAB, know who the candidates are. Some of those candidates very likely have not told their board they're a candidate. So if you don't maintain confidentiality, you start doing reference checks in their local town, and all of a sudden, they're embarrassed because they, nobody knew they were a candidate, so you can't do that. So you have to maintain that confidentiality. Establish the interview schedule and conduct the second round interviews. Based on interviews, identify, announce finalists, semi-finalists, whatever you want to say. Now, schedule each finalist for stakeholder information. It could be meetings, it could be, there's, counties have come up with very creative ways of getting stakeholders involved at this level. One county in Maryland, really, had, had five questions for the three finalists. They did it on television, and then they put it out with a survey. And the stakeholders responded to that survey and gave the board input on their choice for superintendent, which actually worked out very well. So there's ways that you can do that. You can also have a sit-down with X number of board, or stakeholders, and come up with comments from that. That's something that a consultant will work out with you. Complete additional reference, internet and background checks. Now, if you announce who the three finalists are, okay, and you probably will, if you have three, then you can do more background checks to anybody. That's when you get the information that you That's when you get the information that you kind of were looking for about stuff other than their educational background and what have you. You know, you are wide open. If one of the board members has a cousin that lives in that hometown, then now's the time at the end that you can call your cousin and say, "What do you know about this person?"
Yeah.
Okay? And it's amazing what kind of information you can get with a telephone like that. Okay. Site visit and background. Any consulting firm should have someone that spends a lot of time on the internet. And I will tell you that MAB uses a lady that was the Director of Human Resources for Montgomery County Public Schools. She can find more stuff on reference checks than any person I have ever seen in my life. Talk about surprises, she has found a few. But she's good. So, review all finalists' materials, rank order, select and contact the top candidate. You can contact the person, but you have to, if you're going to make an offer, it has to be contingent on approval of the state superintendent.
Right.
Now, we have an acting state superintendent who has been a state superintendent in Mississippi. I have no idea what her feeling will be on. The previous superintendent had to have an interview with the candidate before he would approve them. Okay? I don't know what she will do, but we'll find out. Okay? But you can't make them an offer or sign a contract or approve them until the state superintendent says yes. It's happened, but it wasn't pretty. Negotiate with the top or cop candidate. Tomorrow is a good time to start thinking about salary and benefit package and so forth. If you don't, you'll be nail-biting at the end. Okay? Meeting public session to formalize the appointment. The appointment, create a press release and so forth, but then execute a formal contract. Meeting public session, there are five votes. That's it. Five votes. You're going to have a lot of people that would like to be in on that vote. State law says there are five votes. Okay, this is just a timeline chart. And I'll, the first two are what I've already talked about, basically, who's involved and who does it. The timeline is the one I want you to pay attention to a little bit. It says one, two, four, four or five months. If everything clicks and all the board can meet at the same time and so forth and so on. R, two, four, seven, you're right at time. And it has to be done no later than June 30th. Period.
Yes.
State of Maryland. Now, interim was mentioned. Interim is required to have the same requirements as a superintendent. And an interim must serve from the date they're appointed through June 30 of that year. It is a long-term appointment. Okay? There is also an acting superintendent, which isn't really mentioned in the law, but that is a limited time. So, you think you're going to have a new superintendent in three months or whatever. But the new superintendent contract must begin July 1st. So, they may end up being an interim if you find somebody in December. They would be an interim probably through the rest of that year and then new superintendent as of July 1st. That gets touchy and the state superintendent that I worked with does not like that concept at all. Okay? So, probably as legally possible, but you really need to have somebody ready to go to work July 1st, if possible. Okay. The board's role. Maintain confidentiality, choosing consultant, parameters, criteria, characteristics, public relations, you need a board spokesman, stakeholder involvement, transparency, whatever you can put out, you need to keep the public informed. Candidate applications, the customer responsibility is with the consultant. Board member access to those is through a meeting of the board. It's not individual. It could be individual after that first session and they could be available to individual board members. But until the board has an opportunity to see them, they should be confidentiality. And selecting candidates for interviews is a board process. Now, points to remember, and I'm about done. The board controls the process. The consultants make recommendations, make suggestions. The board decides whether their suggestions will be followed or not. Okay? And I mean that, it doesn't happen a lot, but every once in a while, the board will say, "We understand, but we're going to do this anyhow." Okay, that's up to you. Board must be aware of all costs. We've already talked about that. The board has a right to see all applications. That's probably a MAB thought. Stakeholder and consultant involvement informs the board's deliberations, but ultimately the board is responsible for all decisions. Yeah, yes, you need to listen to a lot of people. Okay? You really do. But you understand there are five votes. Period. When it comes to selecting a superintendent, there are five votes. Confidentiality is crucial to ensure a smooth transition, successful start for a new superintendent. I can't emphasize that enough. It's confidentiality and you're going to be pumped. You know, the favorite line is, "Look, I just want to know for myself. I'm not going to tell anybody." Well, the response to that is, "I know, but you're not the one that's responsible. I am. I'm the one that said I won't release the information." So, you know, it's my neck that I'm blowing out there, not yours. Okay. All right, that's more than you probably bargained for, but any questions that you
Any questions for the presentation, from the presentation?
I did want to make, if I can, just two more comments. One, I mentioned at the beginning, this is a, tonight's presentation is a service associated with being a member of MAB. And I said, "I'm here on my own free will." These two gentlemen are as well. But we don't, we don't, this is a value-added service that we, but we do, and the fee structure is based on our costs. We don't budget for superintendent searches because we don't do them every year, so it's not a sustainable revenue stream. And so, we don't build the budget around doing superintendent searches. And as such, we build the fee based on our anticipated costs. It's meant to be basically a break-even. We don't want to lose money on it, but we're not in it to build the savings account at MAB. The other comment I want to make is about confidentiality. And Mr. Middleton stressed, if nothing else, you know, over and over again about how confidential this process is, to protect primarily the candidates and the integrity of the process. To that extent, nobody at MAB has access to any of this. So, staff at MAB are not accessible to any of the superintendent search files. Mr. Middleton is the lead consultant and some of the other consultants will work with a designated MAB staff person on making some copies of things and they'll come into the office. But we have a workroom, a copy room, and it's pretty much hands-off when they're in there doing that work. So, I just wanted to point that out as far as it speaks to the, you know, how we value the integrity of the process and not, you know, sharing information. I'll have, you know, if I'm asked at any point as I travel around the state, "Hey, who's applying in Kent County?", I can honestly say, "I have no idea." And I like that because it keeps everybody honest in the process.
And I would just add that I will not have access to all of that, which is the way it should be as well. I will be completely out of the process. It is, if you contract with MAB, it is specifically done by the consultants and there is no involvement. So, I would not be involved in that at all.
Yeah, and I just think, the question I have, Mr. Nagel, if you could, or Mr. Middleton, when we're going through the process and we're meeting with the consultant, the materials, the evaluations, all of that is held by the consultant.
Right.
There's nothing that's flowing, there's nothing that, the materials are all, I don't want to say quarantined, but they pretty much are. Right? So, that the confidentiality is just really tight.
They are in a locked vault cabinet at the MAB office. There are two keys. I have access to one and a designated staff member has the other one and that's it. And Mil, better not try to get in.
I don't have the key.
He didn't have the key.
And I would not, you know, my integrity is important and I value the integrity of the process. I would never want to have access to that.
Yeah. Okay. Any additional comments or questions?
You mentioned about how 50 or 60 people would show up at open forums for a while and now you're seeing five and eight. We're seeing something very similar when we have open forums and community meetings. I am a little concerned with doing a heavy digital format for our surveys because I know that we have, we're high poverty and we do have people without access to a digital survey. So, I'm curious about recommendations for other ways to get, to quickly get information out and responses back that would not be digital.
In fact, that in another county, they did two things. They put the survey out in grocery stores and banks and so forth for people to pick up. And they also had their own information about people that did not have access, but they couldn't send them the things. So, they mailed surveys to them. Okay, so that, I mean, that happened in another county and it seemed to work out all right.
And they used different.
Oh, good. Yeah, yeah. Good. Can I ask?
You know, you know what the languages are of your parents and stakeholders? And there are ways to do the same thing for them?
I just wanted to go back to the confidentiality thing to follow up on what Mr. Getz was talking about, like, so that, I'll say the applications. Nothing's going to be sent digitally as it to us. I'm concerned about that because we've experienced, because once it's out there, we experienced, three of us anyhow, a very, very, very sensitive document that went to someone who would, should not, never have gotten it. And you can't take it back once they've gotten it. The other thing is something as simple as something that was sent to the board members from one of the parent-teacher associations, they did not have my Board of Education address, so they sent it to another email address, which is no longer active per se, but it went to the person who's in that spot. So, if there was something that was supposed to be confidential about it, it isn't anymore. I just, I just wonder, I worry about stuff sent out electronically.
No. Go ahead, Bill. Yeah, I mean, old-school works.
Okay. No, I meant like, so.
The actual applications can be copied and put in packets?
And do we hand them back to you at the end? I think that's what Mr. Getz, okay, that's fine. We don't have to take home, homework. I got you. Okay, good.
Did the applications typically, a week before you were meet and go along, they would be either sent to the board and then you pick them up in a confidential package or they're delivered directly to your doorstep?
Okay.
In a sealed package. After you finish with them and decide, "These are the people that we did not want to move forward," I get them back. Okay? And they get shredded down the long. So, you don't hold on to applications that are not active.
Again, this is your process. So, the format and the structure is very much, you know, the consultants are there to provide a service, but like Bill mentioned, hey, we're going to make, he's going to make recommendations, but if you have a different path as consensus as board, then that's your purview, you know? And certainly, you know, I could tell you that there are other boards that would say, "No, we don't want paper. We want to put it in a shared, you know, in a shared folder somewhere in a secure spot and where we could put them." But, you know, certainly, that's why I said, when they're in there making copies, they're making copies so packets can go to board members.
Yeah. So, just a question on timing. So, if we, I mean, obviously, this is listed as an action item, doesn't mean that it has to be, but if we were to move forward in this space, I believe that Mr. Constance has a potential agreement, you know, in front of you. I'm not, I'm not pressuring anyone to go that direction, but I just would be curious as to what that, what that would look like. And then additionally, from a timing perspective, you know, as Mr. Middleton stated, I mean, we don't have forever, right? So, I would be very curious as to, you know, if we were to move on this tonight and their documents are signed and we start moving forward, how quickly would that process begin? Understanding that we also have to make some decisions, right? One, decision on who the point person is. Decisions on, obviously, we would need to, at least I would hope, would create a landing page on our website, you know, so that if there are folks that have comments or want to kind of reach into that space, we certainly can start that. I look at Mr. DiVillio and Mr. Poor because they would play an integral part of building that out. I'm just curious as timing, you know, how this would all come together.
If you move, when you move on that, I have four questions that I would need to answer. And I can have a proposed calendar for you within four or five days after that and meet next day after that. Like, you know, I just need a name, phone number of the person. I need staff members that I am in contact with. I need scheduled meeting dates for you that I have to stay away from. I have, and I ask for blackouts that the board has, you know, when you get into spring, you have all these banquets and what have you. I need that list.
Yep.
So, I stay away from those. And I need individual blackout dates for board members. I'm taking my family to Disney, so I'm not going to be available with Son. And then that's kind of it. And then I build a calendar. And some things you can meet this week and you can meet next week. Some things you meet this week and a month later is your next meeting. So, that's, if that's what I need, I can give you a calendar pretty quickly.
Question about transparency. So, do we announce, let's pretend we're contracted with you or any consultant. Do we make a public statement whenever we're meeting with the consultants?
Do we do special closed session meetings?
Yeah.
What I would say is certain aspects of this process would occur in an open session and certain aspects of this process.
No, I'm expecting a lot of this is closed session, but do we say there's a special board meeting where we will be meeting exclusively in closed session to talk about such and such?
Yeah, because that is a requirement of open meetings. We have to designate when those meetings are going to be.
Okay.
And again, those would be meetings that I would not be attending. It's the board.
Is it unrealistic to think that any of those meetings can occur during a regularly, regularly scheduled closed session and just have you?
I think that would be really tough.
Okay.
You could potentially, but you'd have to do it earlier and it would not, it shouldn't impact our normal.
Regular board.
Yeah, our normal decisions that we have to make.
I want to say one thing. First of all, I get it, confidentiality is the main key to this conversation. I feel like we've got 16, and this will be 16 or 17 weeks to do this. Is that correct? We have like four months? I don't know, whatever. It's not that much time. We've got our regular meetings and we've got the budget meetings and we've got to figure out all these things that we have to answer questions to. And I'm wondering, maybe we should have a meeting every week, you know, one for our regular meetings and one for this. This is going to take a lot of time. I mean, a lot of time. And I don't want to be behind the curve. And in my opinion, I want to be really in front of this process and we're just going to have to, it's going to be a really busy spring. There's no doubt about. There's no doubt about it. And I don't have a problem with you have to do a meeting every week or every other week and interim have meetings or miss. We're going to have to do that, Mr. Getz. That's the way I see it, so.
Yeah, so I think we're at that point. Yeah, Mr. Constance, do you have, you have the document? Have you?
Yeah, I have it. I have a couple of minor handwork markups, but I'll talk about that.
And again, for the board, there's no pressure. I mean, it's depending on what you guys want to do from a timing perspective, but, you know, the document's there, so you definitely want to have legal take a look at it.
I'll just make a comment. After hearing all of that I just went through tonight, you're probably thinking, I'm just overwhelmed with the budgets and everything. I can't get it done. But it typically has worked in Maryland school systems this same time of year.
Yeah.
Even later, it didn't work.
I mean.
But it can, it can work. We're very flexible. Even if we do two searches, there's two of them, one county and one the other. So, you know, it's, it's doable. It's challenging, but it's.
Yeah, I feel confident that our board can do this. I really, I do. We have good members on here, just going to have to work at it.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the timing or the workload. I actually feel a sense of comfort with the process. I mean, I'll just put it out there, you know, with everything that's going on, it's nice to have, you know, partners in this space that, you know, it's not what we do every day. So it's, obviously, this information has made, made me personally feel a little bit better about the process.
I will, I'll emphasize, if you decide to go with Mabe, the very first thing we'll need to re-meet is when you can opt in.
Yeah.
Whether you can fill that calendar.
Yeah.
And each of you, you can do it as quickly as you can, so in a couple of weeks, you can do it right here or anywhere.
Yeah.
Typically, we schedule as many as we can on board meeting times. Now, I would work here, like an hour ahead or right before time or in some cases behind, wherever. And that keeps you from having to schedule another meeting.
Isn't that what Francois asked though? And you kind of quashed that.
Yeah, I mean, well, no, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
I said it would have to be before is what he said.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Independent meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, yeah, okay, yeah.
And I mean, I'll, you know, concur with what my fellow board members have said. I think that we are, we are all prepared to commit and prioritize these meetings and all of the things that we need to do. And for me, I, I like what Mabe has presented to us tonight. I like your familiarity with our area, your experience that you've had in Maryland and the information that you've brought to us. You know, I would feel confident going with your services for this search, but, you know, I am just one person.
I feel the same way with the comfort zone. On top of that, I feel like, because as Mr. Getz said, this is not what we do, I think we all agree we need a consultant. So if we don't take the opportunity to sign with you guys tonight, that's just delaying the process. And as Mr. Rhodes said, we've, we've got like 16 weeks. That's probably two more weeks we don't have to get any work done. So I'm, I'm prepared to sign on the dotted line tonight.
Mr. Constance, are we in a good space or?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
I can bring it up.
So if there is a.
This is the agreement and then they're here individually.
Okay.
This is yours.
So before we.
Thank you.
Mrs. Maria's, she's not here.
She's not here.
Can I just give it to?
Give it to Gail.
Okay, I was going to say I could drop by her house tomorrow. Okay.
So this is that point in the, Mr. Nagel?
Just so that there's no feeling of, I mean, we can achieve ourselves so we're not.
That's fine.
Yeah, that'd be great. Just don't go far.
Just don't go far.
Yeah, appreciate it.
You know, I don't, I'm a big boy, but I didn't even do it. And I feel like we can use your office.
Oh, Gail will have to let you in. It's locked.
Do you want to speak to it? Just speak to it.
Yeah.
Just give us a timeline.
Yes.
Okay.
Do it from down here.
Made a couple markups on the letter agreement. It's very short. Just added a few standard clauses that I like to include in any of our agreements to preserve privileges and immunities that exist for boards of education. Also to require that any assignments be in writing so we know if they, we know who the consultants are that were here today, but if there are outside consultants that were not listed on the second page of that document, that we'd be notified of that in writing and agreed on in advance. And I, for President Getz, I made some notations at the bottom of the page, which Mr. Nagel initialed next to them in agreement.
Okay.
On the one-page confidentiality document that you have, there was just one little typo I fixed on each of them in the middle and then on the bottom bullet, I circled the bullets where I made the changes.
Yeah.
The second to last bullet, I think. I just included a proviso that the indemnification provision be subject to the limits of Maryland law since there do exist privileges and immunities, which we want to explicitly state are not being waived.
Okay. If I could ask the board members, I'm just going to pass this and just take a quick, or take a look at this, just see if there's anything. I don't want to just assume that this is a Joe show. I just, I just want them to take a look just real quick and flip through the document before we.
Do we want to, I mean, regardless of if we go with them as the consultants, I think we do need to establish who the spokesperson is going to be.
Yeah, I would think it should be Joe. The Joe Show.
I agree.
Do we?
It's typically the board president. I think that that would be a wise decision.
Adam, do we need a motion to establish who the point person is, spokesperson is for?
Yes, I would, I think that's an official action that would require a motion in a second.
So we'll make two.
Two motions under this?
Yes. So let me just point, so approval of whether we're going with Mabe first and then?
Yes. You can't do one.
I can't do one before the other because.
One of the items they asked for.
Thank you.
And that would be a designated spokesperson.
Correct.
They're from the shore.
Yes. I was like, hello, Mr. Rhodes. I was like, I hadn't seen him for a while. I was really good. I had to get, they know us.
Give it to.
You have to see it now.
No, there you go. I think we should publicly say what the fee is that they're offering for the services.
Do we know what that is?
It's.
Oh, it's, okay.
I haven't gotten that far.
Are there any comments or questions after taking a look at this? I mean.
This is a stupid question, but does our, does our attorney sit in with us on our meetings?
I.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I think it's, I think it would be up to the board to make that decision. I mean, it's, it's, you're paying for his time, so.
Okay.
It's a decision you need to make.
Yeah.
Okay, so certainly, we've each had an opportunity to take a look at this. I would like to, if the board will have it, entertain a motion.
Before we make a motion, I just want to let the public know that the contract has a fee listed of $20,000 with $10,000 to start, $10,000 when we finish and then if there are any additional costs incurred, we'll be responsible for paying those.
Okay.
And then I'm prepared to make a motion that we contract with Mabe for our superintendent search.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Ms. Sullivan. The second is by Ms. McGee. Are there any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. The next action item would be to select a board spokesperson, point person. Entertain a motion for that.
I motion that our board president, Joe Getz, should be our spokesperson.
Ms. McGee has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Can we grab Mabe?
And what I, what I would want to share with you is, I know it's been done in other counties, is if the legal counsel is involved because you pay for Mr. Constance to travel from Baltimore or Towson from here, from there to here, you could put him on virtual meetings and save some dollars there because, you know, there, I don't know that it would necessarily have to be. There's a lot of meetings that he would have to travel to, so you, you might give that some thought.
So just to kind of, while they're coming in, are we obviously building the budget out for this process?
What I would say is we shared with you at the last board meeting that we do have, we, we have a surplus of dollars in our budget this year. So it would, we're looking to make some determination as to where we allocate those dollars. We talked about that at the last meeting, that we had significant savings in the instructional salaries because we have not been able to fill some of the positions. So as we make those decisions in terms of where we're going to allocate the dollars, we can make those budget adjustments and have those approved. So there is money within current year budget to pay for this process.
So you need to take that before the commissioners, though?
Oh, yeah. Well, we'd have to prove it at the February meeting and then we'll take it to the commissioners.
Okay.
So we voted to, this board approved a motion to accept Mabe as our partner in this process. So thank you for that. We've also, we had a second action item to approve myself as the contact, point person, board spokesperson. So certainly, understanding that we have a timeline, I would like to go ahead and sign the letter of agreement this evening, assuming you would also like each board member to sign their confidentiality papers. And then in that process, we can make some, obviously, the four questions that are, that are there. We may need a day or two to kind of work through that, but we certainly will do that, you know, sooner rather than later so we can get that going. I would ask that if there's any connections that we can ma, make with our, you know, fantastic social media, website, creative design team in the back there, that we also, you know, get some guidance or what is best practice as to creating that landing page, what that looks like so that we can, you know, we've already had some comments. There was already connections made within three hours after the announcement last time, which we just had to kind of hold back because we were still processing. So I think that it would be really nice to have that landing spot, that landing on the page, on the website. And if there's any guidance as to what that looks like, that would be great. So not that that's a big deal, I'm sure they did create it, but, you know, just want to make sure that we're engaged with each other from that standpoint. Okay. Are there any additional questions before we proceed to end the meeting? We will need signatures, so we'll grab that before we go. Is there anything else?
Just as a reminder, with the exception of Billy, you know, this process now, I'm elude.
Thank God.
And so am I.
No, I'm just joking. No, I'm just joking. Sorry. I'm just, I'm just joking.
I don't know to be saying in the audience when the night comes that you make the announcement
for your specific agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Nagel. Appreciate it.
Purview to that, I will certainly be.
Yeah, and thank you, all, each of you coming out tonight. Know it's a bit of a drive to this end of the eastern shore, so we thank you for that and for your time this evening to kind of help us through this process. We are very aware of the, you know, the amount of work and are very dedicated to the process. So certainly, if, you know, we're here partnered with you, so we really appreciate that and thank you. Okay, the next action item on the agenda this evening is our notification of our next meeting. The next meeting of the Board of Education at Kent County will be held on Monday, February 12th, 2024, beginning at 5:30 PM with the open session. Open session will be immediately followed by the board members going into closed session. The open session will resume at 6:30 PM. This meeting will be located at the administrative building in the boardroom, this room located at 5608 Boundary Avenue, Rock Hall, Maryland 21661. The last item on the agenda is to adjourn. The administration is recommending approval to adjourn this meeting, January 23rd, 2024. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn, I just wanted to say we had to cancel the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting that was scheduled for Monday, this past Monday because of the weather, and so we're going to attempt to reschedule that, but we'll let you know the next date for that meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
And then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Ms. Sullivan has the motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. McGee. Any further comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ms. Messing?
Aye.
Ayes have it. The meeting is adjourned.